Hey, Terrence.
How are you?
Good.
Yeah.
Sure.
Thank you.
She didn't give me any logos. Tiny logo versus big.
Well, we might want to know.
That was, uh, breaking.
Oh, Doug, it was so good of you to coordinate your closest mayor today. I didn't realize that was like a county administrator thing that you guys had to. Part of your job is to coordinate with mayor before you're being retired.
Are you again, Mr. Mayor?
Good.
Yeah.
He's just trying to stay as far as possible. He already knows.
This is where they sit.
Oh, no.
So. Mr. County Administrator, how are you?
Very good, how are you doing?
Oh, Supreme Commander.
Wow.
I saw your new job.
You know.
[laughter]
Sure sounds good.
What's your name, your address, your title? This all depends on.
All right. I wanted somebody else to come in. How you doing?
What's your name, your address? This all depends on.
All right, I want to welcome everyone to this special session and I'm going to ask Ms. Cobbins to call the roll.
A special session has been held on Thursday, March thirteenth, two thousand and fourteen, at five o'clock PM, the fifth floor conference room regarding the IMCA presentation for the public safety data followed by an update on the Tiger Brandt. Roll call. Mugia, Maddox, Kane, Markley, Walters, Philbrook, Walker, Townsend, McKernan, Holland.
Here.
Here. Thank you very much. We have, um, I'm going to turn it over to Administrator Bach to kick us off.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, tonight we have with us Tom Worsick with the International City Managers Association. He's with their Center for Public Safety, as you can see on the slide that's up on the board. We've asked him to come tonight to present to the commission about really what they're doing in terms of analysis and looking at different agencies in public safety across the United States. Uh, they worked with several agencies. Tom has a history of working personally in different, in, in, uh, public safety, but then as he's worked for ICMA, they've taken a look at other governments, um, their police, fire, sheriff's units, how they deploy their services, how they account for the, if you say the data, as far as what kinds of calls for service they're going out and looking for today and when they go after those. Um, so he's going to present that information to us. I'll also note that earlier in today, um, we met for a couple hours with Tom where he went through with our, our management team, talked about different aspects of this, allowed them to engage in some questions and go over it in a, at a different level of detail with them so they could dig into it. And then this afternoon, we met with our, uh, union groups in, um, police, fire, and the sheriff's department where they also could, um, hear his presentation and engage in it and understand what you're looking at from that perspective. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to Tom and let him take us through his presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. Uh, thank you for arranging for warm weather while I came here. A couple of weeks ago, I was in Minneapolis, Minnesota, when it was thirty below zero and, uh, wasn't quite so nice, but, uh, enjoyed my time here. Uh, one of the things that, that my center in, it's one of four centers at ICMA, uh, in the area of programs, one, uh, one being the Center for Public Safety Management. We also have the performance measurement that looks at individual cities around the country. I know Saint, uh, or excuse me, Kansas City, Missouri is a member of, uh, the Center for Performance Measurement, uh, as well as some other, uh, governments in the area. We also have sustainable communities and management strategies. Uh, my center looks at public safety and one of the things that we see traveling not only around the United States, but around the world is that, uh, change is going to come upon us. The change is going to take place in the area of public safety and service delivery. The challenge will be, how do we embrace the change? Do we fight it? Do we make it work? And how do we do it safely, both for our responders and our communities, as well as efficiently and effectively? Uh, but we're seeing, uh, some pretty significant, um, transitions in a lot of agencies. Uh, today, for instance, I was on, online and got an email from some friends in Los Angeles, and they've been embracing predictive policing, which is kind of one of the things that we use data to look at. It turns out, as individuals and as humans, we're pretty predictive in police, in fire, in EMS, when our calls for service are going to be, what types are, are happening. Uh, Los Angeles is probably one of the largest agencies to take data and use it in everyday, uh, uh, deployment of their police resources. And they reported in one of their districts yesterday, the amazing fact, they had no crime occur because they were able to pre-deploy, look at the crime, and target where, where it would have actually been occurring. And of course, one of the things when you do that, you move it. So it's where did that crime go? But they were able to use data to redeploy smartly, no more staffing, but actually move and, and, and have a day without crime, which was kind of a, a, a whole kind of fallacy and then the press had a field day in, in, uh, Los Angeles. But it shows the impact that we have when we use data and when we look at change and use that data to, to allow change to occur. Um, just a, a few things that, one of the things, as I travel around, I've been to all fifty states, Europe, uh, UK, just got back from the UK, uh, that have looked at, at this whole concept and have taken that, uh, full circle and that they use predictive analysis in EMS, fire, and police. Uh, but the typical, typical request that my team is usually called in to look at is that people need more. That, that's usually the cry, we need more, we need more resources, more equipment, more stations. Uh, I don't know if yours would be unique. I, I didn't have any volunteers today that said they asked for less. Uh, that's usually not the cry, but one of the things that we look at is normally fifty to, fifty to sixty percent of most municipal budgets are public safety. They, they are, are taking up fifty to sixty percent, and of that, eighty percent is usually a personnel. So making change is going to impact people. You can say, well, we'll only change equipment, or we'll only change sta, change stations. That's not where the money is. The money is actually in the people. It's also a long-term commitment for, for communities. If you add a person, you don't add a person just for tomorrow. You're usually adding them for twenty-five years. So the expense isn't a one-time expense. It's a twenty-five year or thirty-year expense, and with pensions and, and such afterwards, it could be a lifetime expense, uh, that as people live longer, uh, that's getting to be more and more. Also, we find that the aggregate data, that total numbers of calls is a misleading, uh, number, that a lot of times, uh, when departments say, well, we had a ten percent increase in calls, or fifteen percent increase in calls, that doesn't require any more people. Uh, and, and the example I used today, if you had fifteen percent more bike larcenies come into your department, probably those could be taken on paper by the existing staff. Now, if you had fifteen percent more homicides, that would be another whole matter because those are extremely labor-intensive, extremely time-consuming, and so you're looking at a significant workload change. Uh, performance is not always a linear function. Sometimes an increase of fifty percent, uh, maybe, may require little or no change in staffing, that it can be handled with technology, with other, other ways. And fire, which is primarily insurance-driven, that, that drives how, how we deploy, uh, insurance, uh, the workload is usually not an issue, uh, except in the busiest of departments. And then we have to look at, are we providing sufficient times for crews to rest, especially if they're on a twenty-four hour shift, which anticipates a downtime, uh, on a twenty-four hour shift? Uh, and in EMS, are we transporting? Are we first responders? How does that work? ALS, BLS? And what amount of time is being spent at hospitals, off, off-shift training, education? Those can all quickly, and, and one of the things that we're seeing across the country is time spent in emergency rooms.
What's ALS and BLS?
Um, advanced life support and basic life support. Advanced life support would be where they're, they're actually starting IVs, uh, doing more advanced care, uh, basic life support. Normally it would be an EMT-delivered service. ALS would require a paramedic, at least one, on, on a unit. Uh, what's, what we're seeing happening across the country that's driving this change? Uh, pensions and pension issues. Uh, many communities didn't set aside sufficient revenues for healthcare, which is usually the driving factor in, in retirement. Uh, it was normally a cheap benefit back when I started in local government a long time ago. It was something you gave employees, it was a nice thing to do. Uh, today, I mean, when I started, it was probably a hundred and fifty dollars for a single individual, uh, per month. Today, you won't get into doctor's office for a hundred and fifty, even your co-pay. Uh, so pensions are becoming a big issue, usually driven by the, the fact that we didn't fund healthcare, that that was kind of put off for the future, that it was thought to be a, a non-cost, that we, by the time you replaced the individuals with a lower-cost employee, you'd save the money. Uh, public anger towards just municipal employees and municipal, uh, government, that people don't want to pay. They don't want to pay more, they don't want to pay for services, they think we're wasteful. Uh, usually the big thing that the, the, uh, that is cited in studies is waste, fraud, and abuse. At the local level, we rarely see that as a big issue, that at the local level, most local governments run pretty lean. At the federal level, where I live in Washington DC, that may not always be the case, but at the local level, we find that they're pretty efficient and pretty, uh, you know, tightly run. Uh, cop, we're seeing much more competition arise from the private sector. We had, uh, fire service, uh, actually be bid upon by Wackenhut Corporation in California, a private company bidding on public, private, uh, public fire service. We're also seeing, uh, the EMS, uh, receive non-solicited bids to provide EMS service in a lot of communities. So the private sector is seeing that there is an opportunity to expand into the, into the public sector. The Affordable Healthcare Act, that's going to change a lot of how we deal with EMS issues, what we get paid, what we get compensated, how long will we wait at hospitals, how, what will the, the level of payment be? The interesting thing that will change is we used to look at the, the mix of, of payers. Was it healthcare? Was it private pay? Was it unpaid? Uh, with everyone, uh, hopefully going to have insurance, that changes the whole complexity of things because now we would be paid for all runs, hopefully. Uh, that, that's, that's the goal. Uh, and then looking at dynamic deployment or system status management, predictive, uh, policing, predictive firefighting, and, and EMS delivery. Do we look and, and match staffing along lines of when we know calls for service are coming in? Again, it takes the, uh, uh, initial data to do that. And smart strategies. One community we worked in, in Annapolis, Maryland, that was having a homicide problem, they were deploying their resources in a downtown area and were wondering why the homicides were increasing in the community. When we looked at the data, it was being driven by public housing projects on the exterior of the city. And so, not by adding people, but by redeploying at peak times of the day, when the incidents were occurring, they were able to actually drop their homicide rate, uh, which was, was pretty unique and, and one of those, those, uh, aha moments when they recognized their people were in the wrong place at the wrong time when the incidents happened. Normally, police patrol, we, we look at it being data-driven, it's becoming much more so today, uh, but the, the emphasis needs to be on prevention, whether it's police, fire, EMS, uh, that prevention, for every dollar you spend on prevention, you usually save seven dollars on the other end, on, on actually what's lost. Homeland Security has even picked up on that number and claimed that for every dollar you spend on prevention and mitigation, it saves seven dollars a loss. And when we look at, especially in the business community and in, in local government, when a small business normally is disrupted by an emergency event, seventy percent of them don't come back into business. So when we have a, an emergency or a disaster or whatever, we have to look at the risk of what happens. So prevention is, is much more critical. One question I always ask people is, what's the FBI recommended officers per thousand population? It's a stat, a, a number usually thrown out, and there is no such number. Uh, it's always fun to ask chiefs and, when I'm in a room full of police chiefs, and they'll throw out two and a half, three, four, five, uh, there is no such number. And, and the reason is, is because deployment is not, again, a linear function, it's workload. It's how much workload is required to handle the instance you have. If you compare your community to, say, Detroit, or a city with a high crime rate, your policing needs may be less, theirs may be more. Same in fire, if they have a high fire risk, you may not need as, as, as concentrated of a, of a force as what they may need in those other communities. And again, it starts with the question of how many, uh, patrol personnel are actually on the street. Uh, that's usually kept in the Human Resources Department and absent from the data collection or the police department. And so you need both to marry up to find out what is your capacity available and what were you using? Uh, and that's usually the most common element that we see. I've seen some very, uh, extraordinary departments that are really doing the data, but lack that, that capability of finding out how many officers were actually on the street. And it, it should vary by season, by day of week, by year. Your calls for service probably are not as great in the middle of winter as what they are during the summertime, when people are out, when you have festivals, when you have events. If you're staffing twenty-four, seven, three hundred and seventy, or three hundred and sixty-five days of the year, you're probably going to be missing something, or you're going to be ill-deployed. You're going to have more people than you need at certain periods of the time and less than when you may, may other, uh, periods. Again, the difference is, is between calls for service and workload. Calls for service, uh, is a quantity, it's a number, and workload is a cumulative amount of time to handle those calls for service. So there's a big, uh, distinguishing factor. Uh, Joe Brand from the Co, uh, Cops Office, he was the first Cops Director, he called it an urban myth when we get into comparing officers per thousand. But it's something we like to say, that, well, you had two and a half officers per thousand and Kansas City, Missouri had two point three, or whatever. It's a bad number to get locked into because it is not indicative of what's the actual thing driving your deployment. Uh, questions that, that need to be asked and should be asked of, of, of police, fire, and EMS, do you know what the response time is? In the policing area, that's not as critical. Only on very few police calls is response time initial, uh, critical. Uh, getting to a, a B and E in progress, or a crime in pro, a breaking and entering in progress, or a crime in progress, is important. Getting to a stolen bicycle, getting to a bad check complaint is not a critical, time, a time-critical element. What is important is setting your customer expectations. And so dispatch needs to understand that when they tell somebody calling in that, we'll have an officer right there, the expectation then of the citizen is, there'll be an officer right there. If the officer arrives ten minutes, fifteen minutes, twenty minutes later, because it's a low priority call, what's the, what's the reaction usually of the citizen? Normally, they probably called you, and they're saying, where is that police department? What are they doing? They must all be downtown at the, the, the break, uh, break shop or whatever. Uh, and so it's important to set customer expectations. It's report, it's important to, to, uh, measure by time of day, look at seasonal factors that may impact. Obviously, if it's snowing, your, your response time may slow down. Uh, do they always check for bad data? Is our outlier is thrown out? Uh, and are, are long response times explained? Why did it take so long to get to something? Uh, in patrol, are patrols aligned properly? Do they align with workload? Are they aligned by day, a week, or are they the same all, all year long? And are the same number of patrol units, uh, available around the clock? It's probably not a good idea. You'll probably, like most departments, police, fire, EMS, we see a bell curve response that normally calls for service begin increasing about seven AM, when people get up, start going to work. They peak in the afternoon and then usually drop off as the day goes on, unless you have a nightlife, uh, capacity in your town or a college, and then surprisingly, about two AM, there's another little blip that usually peaks up, where people, again, tend to mingle and, and get out. Uh, are problem areas, such as shift changes identified? And do shifts start times and schedules, are, are they flexible? Or are they locked in and everybody leaves at once, everybody comes in at once? Uh, that's not usually a good factor, uh, and this would be one example of, of how we begin to measure and, and show data to communities, but as you'll notice about at the oh-two hour, they're beginning to run out of staffing time, and at twenty hours or, or eight o'clock at night, they're just about all, the green line is how many, uh, officers are available, the red line is what is the workload. So at about eight o'clock at night, they're almost out of staffing. They have nobody to respond to calls. Uh, and by simply aligning that differently and using start and end times and going to five different starting and end times, we were able to remove that pinch point without adding any staff. It was just simply deploying smarter and getting around that, that whole pinch point where they ran out.
Okay, can you, so explain the dotted line and the straight line again.
Okay. The dotted line, when I, when I talked about the, the number of hours that are available, that's the, the number of staff that were on duty and how much time was available. That's the element that we track. The green is how many, how much time was being required to perform all the duties that were being called on officer calls, uh, calls from citizens, designated patrols, that's the cumulative green line. Normally, we'd make it, it's a little more complex for this slide, and it shows up better in, on a PowerPoint, that we're able to show it in just two lines. We usually show it multi-dimensional, uh, but the availa, availability, and this happens to be a ten-hour shift, the problem with ten-hour shifts, you always have an overlapping period where you have twice the, the number of staff on than what you need. Crime usually doesn't double any period of time. If it does, you have a problem in your community. Uh, but ten-hour shifts are the, are the worst by far to, to deploy on. So again, we removed that. Uh, shift-length experiments, uh, there've been a number of studies done. Uh, the, the police have just come out with one on the Police Foundation that looked at, uh, it was, there were some limitations. One, it was three departments, one that wasn't very well-managed, I guess would be a, a good term. The officers were allowed to come in and drop out of the, the experiment. Uh, but one of the things they found, they did do is excellent bio, uh, data testing, and the firefighters just did a, a comparable, uh, testing, uh, on some deployment, looking at what are the stressors on a high-rise fire, what are the, and showing how bodies react and how the, the physio, uh, changes took place and, and what happens. Uh, but that was one of the positives. What they found, their eight-hour shifts work significantly more overtime, uh, than ten or twelve-hour shifts. If you think about it, it's because eight hours, you can, twelve hours, it's harder to work overtime, so people aren't as apt to, to work as much time. Um, and all of the, all of the, uh, shifts, eight, ten, and twelve, they found that the officer, uh, quality of life did not get impacted by, so all three were acceptable. Uh, I found usually, at least in departments and ones that we've looked at, officers liked the twelve-hour shift because they had more days off, uh, was one of the factors. Uh, the firefighters did a similar study through the Fire Chiefs Association, uh, and it found problems with sleep deprivation, that the twenty-four-hour shift, especially back-to-back, can lead to physio changes that impact negatively on the, uh, the body, that they tend to have more obesity, uh, driven simply because of, of the, uh, you're, you're, you're resting and you're suddenly thrown into a situation where you're at full capacity, and then you're back to resting. It's extremely hard on the body, and so the twenty-four-hour shift has its limitations in especially busy departments. Uh, if your department is really busy in EMS, if you think about it, how alert would you be after twelve, fifteen, sixteen hours of running continuously? Uh, the equivalent was found after about fourteen hours of a blood alcohol of about, equivalent of point one oh.
Did you find in, or did the Fire Chiefs Association find that eight-hour shifts for fire departments required more personnel than total?
Yes.
So personnel becomes more expensive?
Right. Twenty-four-hour shift is the cheapest shift you can deploy on. I mean, because you can get fifty-six hours of regular time before you have to pay overtime. Up to, it's a negotiated standpoint, obviously, but by Federal Labor Standard Act, you can go to fifty-six-hour work week. So twenty-four is the, 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 requires the least personnel to fully staff around the clock on a twenty-four-hour shift. Eight would take more, uh, twelve would be in between the two.
All right, thank you.
Uh, again. Can you state again what, about what sleep deprivation is equal to?
Uh, after a certain period of time, it can, after twelve to fourteen hours, it's equivalent of a point one oh blood, uh, blood alcohol level.
So the sleep deprivation has an, an equal, um, delay for someone as alcohol intoxication?
Correct. That they aren't as alert, and, and if you think about it, if you're alert, you know, twelve, fourteen, sixteen hours after that, you become exhausted. It's why emergency rooms are changing to lesser hours, why they're, they're limiting what people can work in emergency rooms, same factor. Do you want somebody making life-and-death decisions that has been up twenty hours doing that? Uh, you know, I wouldn't want to go to have a heart surgery procedure on a doctor that had been working twenty hours, yet that's what we sometimes expect of our, our EMS personnel, so it can be a very negative factor. Um, again, the deployment factors that we look at, uh, the, the red and the blue, uh, the red line actually is a cumulative line of all of the workload, or all of the work that's being required, and the blue is the workload. This shows a ten-hour shift, and again, you'll see the doubling factor at each end, usually happens during the night when your calls for service actually decrease, uh, and it's properly aligning that. This was a department that, the, the yellow, or it kind of comes out orange in, in this slide on the PowerPoint, they added staffing because they thought their workload was greater, and it actually didn't match their deployment. They ended up with a lot more staffing when they didn't need it, and were short on staffing when they really did. So that's the problem on, on a ten-hour, and it's mainly because it doesn't divide into twenty-four. Uh, you know, eight, twelve, twenty-four divided into twenty-four hours a day. Ten hours, you're always going to have an overlap, and it's how do you manage that overlap? Uh, we look at a rule of sixty percent. Uh, one of the things that we did a study with CALEA, which is the Commission on Accreditation of Law Enforcement Agencies, and what we found is that sixty percent of the personnel in a department should usually be assigned to patrol functions. Uh, the other thing that I, I mentioned to your staff today, if you have a specialized, um, cop, cops program, uh, uh, community-oriented policing, you can't have a specialized unit. Community-oriented policing is a department mentality. Uh, Barney Malukian, who's one of our, our team, uh, is the former director at Cops Office, and he said, the problem when we, we try and put it upon a few individuals is that philosophy of serving, you know, citizens and really engaging them and being active doesn't spread throughout the department. You have a few individuals that have that philosophy, the other individuals are, we're just going to go on routine patrol. You know, that's not our job, that's your job to be a community policing officer, I'm not. It has to be a philosophy adopted throughout the organization. It has to, test to be, really, it's almost like a, a plague in the, in the department, it should infect everybody, uh, that everybody should have that as a goal. Uh, and the other thing we found is that after sixty percent, after the workload gets above sixty percent, if, if your officers are, uh, if their time is, is being spent at eighty percent, you know, they're on eighty percent of the time, rather, rather than sixty, after sixty, they go into almost a reactive mode, that, uh, they begin hearing the radio, they begin hearing calls for service, and they think, wow, everybody's tied up on a call, I'm not going to go out and stop somebody, I'll just wait for the next call. And, and it just, it, it tends to be a breakpoint of about sixty percent that we found. We looked at a hundred and eighty-eight departments and a thousand other departments than CALEA with the data, and at that sixty percent, when you're at about sixty percent of, of capacity, you begin to actually lose efficiency after that point. So you try and keep it at that level that allows officers to do community policing, allows them still to engage, uh, but that's the, the kind of the, the benchmark. Can you go higher? You can have thirty percent, twenty percent, that's a policy decision of the local government. We've seen departments eighty and ninety percent that they want free. They, they want, you know, the officers out doing complete, uh, routine patrol or community policing, they don't want them tied up on calls. Again, that gets down to a local decision. How, what level do you want that breakpoint? Uh, we look at, at questions to, to determine whether a workforce is, is being deployed properly, whether it's efficiently and effectively being done. Are activity times being recorded? Are they being compiled? Are daily logs, do final records reflect? Um, how do they collect? And are there metrics for community-oriented policing? One of the problems with random routine patrols that we saw, uh, you know, and, and policing has actually gone off its full circuit. Uh, we, we started out, that officers walked the beat, they went downtown, they talked to people, and then we began putting them in cars, and then we rolled up the windows in cars and put air conditioners in. And then we put AM, FM radios in because we thought that would keep them out on routine random patrols even longer. The one thing that was guaranteed on routine random patrol is that the gas tank would be, be empty by the end of your shift, uh, because they drove around, they didn't stop and talk to people, and we wondered why there was a disengagement between the public and policing.
Communities, but as you'll notice about at the oh-two hour, they're beginning to run out of staffing time and at twenty hours or eight o'clock at night, they're just about all, the green line is how many officers are available, the red line is what is the workload. So at about eight o'clock at night, they're almost out of staffing. They have nobody to respond to calls. And by simply aligning that differently and using start and end times and going to five different starting and end times, we were able to remove that pinch point without adding any staff. It was just simply deploying smarter and getting around that whole pinch point where they ran out.
Okay, can you explain the dotted line and the straight line again?
Okay, the dotted line, when I talked about the number of hours that are available, that's the number of staff that were on duty and how much time was available. That's the element that we track. The green is how many, how much time was being required to perform all the duties that were being called on officer calls, calls from citizens, designated patrols. That's the cumulative green line. Normally, we'd make it, it's a little more complex for this slide and it shows up better in on a PowerPoint that we're able to show it in just two lines. We usually show it multi-dimensional. But the availability, and this happens to be a ten-hour shift, the problem with ten-hour shifts, you always have an overlapping period where you have twice the number of staff on than what you need. Crime usually doesn't double any period of time. If it does, you have a problem in your community. But ten-hour shifts are the worst by far to deploy on. So again, we removed that. Shift-length experiments, there've been a number of studies done. The police have just come out with one on the Police Foundation that looked at, it was, there were some limitations. One, it was three departments, one that wasn't very well managed, I guess would be a good term. The officers were allowed to come in and drop out of the experiment. But one of the things they found, they did do is excellent biodata testing. And the firefighters just did a comparable testing on some deployment, looking at what are the stressors on a high-rise fire, what are the, and showing how bodies react and how the physio changes took place and what happens. But that was one of the positives. What they found, eight-hour shifts work significantly more overtime than ten- or twelve-hour shifts. If you think about it, it's because eight hours, you can. Twelve hours, it's harder to work overtime, so people aren't as apt to work as much time. And all of the shifts, eight, ten, and twelve, they found that the officer quality of life did not get impacted by, so all three were acceptable. I found usually, at least in departments and ones that we've looked at, officers liked the twelve-hour shift because they had more days off was one of the factors. The firefighters did a similar study through the Fire Chiefs Association, and it found problems with sleep deprivation, that the twenty-four-hour shift, especially back-to-back, can lead to physio changes that impact negatively on the body, that they tend to have more obesity, driven simply because of the, you're resting and you're suddenly thrown into a situation where you're at full capacity and then you're back to resting. Extremely hard on the body. And so the twenty-four-hour shift has its limitations in especially busy departments. If your department's really busy in EMS, if you think about it, how alert would you be after twelve, fifteen, sixteen hours of running continuously? The equivalent was found after about fourteen hours of a blood alcohol of about, equivalent of .10.
Did you find in, or did the Fire Chiefs Association find that eight-hour shifts for fire departments required more personnel than total?
Yes.
So personnel becomes more expensive?
Right. Twenty-four-hour shift is the cheapest shift you can deploy on. I mean, because you can get fifty-six hours of regular time before you have to pay overtime. Up to, it's a negotiated standpoint, obviously, but by Federal Labor Standard Act, you can go to fifty-six-hour work week. So twenty-four is the, requires the least personnel to fully staff around the clock on a twenty-four-hour shift. Eight would take more, twelve would be in between the two.
All right, thank you.
Again- Can you explain what, about what sleep deprivation is equal to?
After a certain period of time, it can, after twelve to fourteen hours, it's equivalent of a .10 blood alcohol level.
So the sleep deprivation has an equal delay for someone as alcohol intoxication?
Correct. That they aren't as alert, and if you think about it, if you're alert, you know, twelve, fourteen, sixteen hours after that, you become exhausted. It's why emergency rooms are changing to lesser hours, why they're limiting what people can work in emergency rooms. Same factor. Do you want somebody making life-and-death decisions that has been up twenty hours doing that? You know, I wouldn't want to go to have a heart surgery procedure on a doctor that had been working twenty hours. Yet, that's what we sometimes expect of our EMS personnel. So it can be a very negative factor. Again, the deployment factors that we look at, the red and the blue, the red line actually is a cumulative line of all of the workload, or all of the work that's being required, and the blue is the workload. This shows a ten-hour shift. And again, you'll see the doubling factor at each end. Usually happens during the night when your calls for service actually decrease, and it's properly aligning that. This was a department that the yellow, or it kind of comes out orange in this slide on the PowerPoint, they added staffing because they thought their workload was greater and it actually didn't match their deployment. They ended up with a lot more staffing when they didn't need it and were short on staffing when they really did. So that's the problem on a ten-hour, and it's mainly because it doesn't divide into twenty-four. You know, eight, twelve, twenty-four, divide into twenty-four hours a day. Ten hours, you're always going to have an overlap, and it's how do you manage that overlap? We look at a rule of sixty percent. One of the things that we did a study with CALEA, which is the Commission on Accreditation of Law Enforcement Agencies, and what we found is that sixty percent of the personnel in a department should usually be assigned to patrol functions. The other thing that I mentioned to your staff today, if you have a specialized cops program, community-oriented policing, you can't have a specialized unit. Community-oriented policing is a department mentality. Barney Malukian, who's one of our team, is the former director at Cops Office, and he said, "The problem when we try and put it upon a few individuals is that philosophy of serving, you know, citizens and really engaging them and being active doesn't spread throughout the department." You have a few individuals that have that philosophy. The other individuals are, "We're just going to go on routine patrol. That's not our job. That's your job to be a community policing officer. I'm not." It has to be a philosophy adopted throughout the organization. It has to test to be, really, it's almost like a plague in the department. It should infect everybody. That everybody should have that as a goal. And the other thing we found is that after sixty percent, after the workload gets above sixty percent, if your officers are, if their time is being spent at eighty percent, you know, they're on eighty percent of the time rather than sixty, after sixty, they go into almost a reactive mode, that they begin hearing the radio, they begin hearing calls for service, and they think, "Wow, everybody's tied up on a call. I'm not going to go out and stop somebody. I'll just wait for the next call." And it just, it tends to be a breakpoint of about sixty percent that we found. We looked at one hundred eighty-eight departments and a thousand other departments in CALEA with the data. And at that sixty percent, when you're at about sixty percent of capacity, you begin to actually lose efficiency after that point. So you try and keep it at that level that allows officers to do community policing, allows them still to engage, but that's the kind of the benchmark. Can you go higher? You can have thirty percent, twenty percent. That's a policy decision of the local government. We've seen departments eighty and ninety percent that they want free. They want, you know, the officers out doing complete routine patrol or community policing. They don't want them tied up on calls. Again, that gets down to a local decision. How, what level do you want that breakpoint? We look at questions to determine whether workforce is being deployed properly, whether it's efficiently and effectively being done. Are activity times being recorded? Are they being compiled? Are daily logs, do final records reflect? How do they collect? And are there metrics for community-oriented policing? One of the problems with random routine patrols that we saw, you know, and policing has actually gone off its full circuit. We started out that officers walked the beat, they went downtown, they talked to people, and then we began putting them in cars. And then we rolled up the windows in cars and put air conditioners in. And then we put AM/FM radios in because we thought that would keep them out on routine random patrols even longer. The one thing that was guaranteed on routine random patrol is that the gas tank would be empty by the end of your shift because they drove around. They didn't stop and talk to people. And we wondered why there was a disengagement between the public and policing. We didn't talk to each other anymore. You know, think of your spouse or a friend. If you don't talk to them, what relationship do you have? And that's the thing that we're driving back into policing and where community-oriented policing is effective, is it opens up those lines of communication. And I talked to some of your folks that you have those relationships building. It needs to expand because that's where we're effective, when we're sharing information and getting, you know, good feedback. And so do we establish metrics, or are we doing the same thing, putting them on a bike and then go out and ride routine? Because I guarantee they'll ride routine. Are they encouraged to engage? Are those activities being tracked? Is somebody watching the farm? Looking at variations by season, looking at comparative analysis, looking at, are they sharing information that they get? One of the things we're seeing with geographic information systems and the data field, there's so much more robust information we can gather and collect that it begins to be able to predict where crime is going to occur, how it's going to occur. Is it tracking? Are we having pockets of crime? And how do we address them? Because you can begin targeting resources to get to the root of problems much more effectively. Are vacation days controlled? Are multiple units going to calls that they don't need to? Are response times being looked at and do they vary? In investigation, the same holds true. Are caseloads being tracked? Are intelligence, is intelligence shared in the fire area? Do we have policies? And are they working with each other? Are they accredited and following the processes of accreditation? They don't have to actually get the plaque on the wall, but are they engaging and looking? Are they covering all the bases? And that's the value of accreditation. Fire, and the big challenge in fire is along the lines of policing, we put firefighters in stations, we told them, "Close the door, don't talk to people, shut the lights off, and don't ever go out in public." And what the studies out of the UK that's now in year eleven is that we need to go full circle on that. And again, get the firefighters back out engaging with the communities. If you think about it, where do we inspect buildings? We inspect commercial occupancies, we inspect industrial occupancies. Where are most of the fires and injuries and fatalities occurring? Single-family residences. We don't even look at those. Again, engaging the firefighters back out in the community, saying, "Do we do voluntary inspections? Do we work with citizens to put smoke detectors in homes and provide in-home inspection programs where we can look at trip-and-fall hazards, frayed wires, you know, all of those things that we do in commercial and industrial occupancies? Do we do that where most of the fires are occurring and where most of the fatalities occur?" And again, and that came out of the UK where they've made this transition and seen thirty, forty, fifty, sixty percent reductions in the injuries to firefighters, homeowner fatalities and injuries. Again, so it works when we target that and move to the prevention aspect. But it's hard to do. It's hard to tell people, "Now we need you back out. We locked you all up. Now we need you to back, go back and engage." We're always asked, "Do you need that many firefighters and that much equipment?" Again, workload is usually not the factor. It's how it's occurring. Is it all at once? Is it time of day? Is it seasonally? How are we deploying? We normally deploy static. We do twenty-four-hours-a-day schedule. And if the problem on a twenty-four-hour shift is, and you have, when you have a bell curve response, you're trying to cover that peak part of the day that may be at one o'clock in the afternoon, but on a twenty-four-hour response, you're adding staff at 1:00 a.m. and you're adding them at, you know, 11:00 p.m. to handle that peak period of your day. So do you have flexibility? Can you staff on a twelve-hour, maybe a combination? You may have most of your staff on twenty-four, but do you have the capability to ramp up to handle peak loads? Again, those are issues that we're seeing in some parts of the country addressed. It's, with EMS, it's a significant area. You want to add the right resources at the right time. The response time in fire and EMS is much more critical for the first units than it is in policing because they need to get there quick and intervene. Do you know what your community's worst-case scenario is? And this, we went through a city, had seventeen pieces of equipment, seventeen three-person engine companies. We looked at it, how many incidents they had, they had about six thousand, two thousand that were occurring multiple times. Sixteen incidents or more, sixteen calls in an hour occurred two times in the year, and we drilled down into the busiest five minutes. And when they thought they had exhausted all their resources, even in the busiest five minutes, they still had seven three-person units available, so twenty-one people. So again, if you're not looking at those, what is your capability and capacity? Do you have the ability with automatic aid to, again, on a regional basis, begin to pull in for the worst-case scenario? Because nobody can afford to staff for the worst-case scenario. Because if you come up with the worst case, I'll come up with something worser, if that's a word. And we can always outdo each other. And so automatic aid becomes critical. High-rise fires can quickly deplete all your resources. How, where do you get more? Again, through automatic aid and agreements, but it takes working together and training together. With that, I'm going to stop. I was told I had a half hour, and I'd like to open up to questions from you. But one of the things that we look at, again, in the fire and the policing area, is making the right decisions using data. That it's easy to sometimes do it because of outcries or whatever perceptions. We really have to drill down and see what is the underlying problem, or do we have an underlying problem? Because the other challenge that we, that you face is perception is hard to overcome. If people perceive it unsafe or perceive something as a problem, that's a hard thing to change. It's, if you actually have it happening, that's easy to tackle. But once a perception takes hold, it's very hard to change the public's mind.
I get, Mayor, is he going to go out and analyze our stuff and then come back? Or what are we doing here?
Well, the key is, we're getting ready to do studies. We've already authorized and funded a study for fire service. And one of the things that we're doing is we're putting out an RFP for who's going to do that study. I mean, this group, ICMA, is a group that does these exact studies. We could hire them. The issue is, is making sure we're asking the right questions. Making sure that we understand, because when you talk about fire service, the elements he's talking about in terms of peak times, seasonally and day-long, do we have the same number of firefighters deployed throughout the twenty-four-hour period, even though the data shows that they're actually peak times when fire service or EMS is needed more? And are we able to flex our staff so that we're staffing for the peak times but not for the low times? Those are the kinds of questions we, I think we need to be asking. We also need to be asking the question about our shifts. We run straight twenty-four-hour shifts. Is that the most efficient and economical way based on our demand? You know, we need to get, we need to get Kansas City, Kansas data for EMS and fire response and staff according to Kansas City, Kansas responses, not just based on national averages for what people say is the, is the need. But as that, the key that I, that I want to know is how do we gather that data? If a company comes in to assess this, how do they get at this data? Is this data that our department already gathers? Do we already have it and we just need to have somebody look at it? What is the process, I think is your question, for moving forward with this study?
The one thing that we do is we don't go back. We found that going back to department reports, one of the problems is very few, actually, we've yet to find one record management system that accurately captures the data from computer-aided dispatch systems. That's usually the first failure in communities. So we start there because if you aren't recording it correctly and it's not being, that's the official record of the city. If that's not being done right, you, when we leave, you're done because you can't recreate what we, what we would do. So we start there. We go back to the computer-aided dispatch. We use a team of PhDs out of Rutgers who love data and all that code and all that stuff that I'm not the one that does. But they, they go back and they take all that code and begin to classify it. And again, they compile all of this into the workload and then get the personnel records and marry the two together so that we're able to produce this. You can do it other ways. You can do it from reports. You can do it from, from daily logs. But what we find is that it's, it's not as accurate. And it doesn't establish you to go forward in the future, that you can't recreate that. You're always going to constantly be doing that. The best systems that communities found don't capture it accurately. And so we start there. We use that data and begin that whole process. And that has to be your official record.
Go ahead. The, the culture change in my former life, we both had union and management going through, and they would be listening to this presentation with the staff right here. And then everybody heard the same thing. And I think it's great. I know, we have to study not just this, police and the sheriffs and multiple jobs. But when we get further along and we start getting reports out, I would like to have the fire chief, police chief, sheriffs, all the union folks here and let them hear the same thing we hear at the exact same time. So when they have a question, we know what their questions are instead of having three different meetings, because I'm sure you would have had twenty different questions. And, and the reason that it, they did it jointly was so both sides heard the same thing and then everybody believed what you were working on.
Absolutely.
And, and, and so my request would be, as we get further along, that, you know, we're here, we've got the other folks here, say, "Here's your opportunity to say something, not say something. Here's what our goal is. Our goal should be the same thing as your goal." You know, so everyone, we go to this transparency where everyone understands that we want to maintain the same quality of service, you know, and that there's certain things we can do, find certain things we can't. But if we can or we can't, why can't we? Or, you know, have them say, "Hey, here's the issue I see." Because what I don't want to do is, I don't want to have a meeting here and get ten phone calls from, you know, Don Ash or something and say, "Well, I liked the first part of what you said, but the second part was terrible." Well, Don, you had the opportunity to be here. So I think in fairness to all the departments that we're looking at, that they have a bite at the apple at the same time we do.
I don't disagree with that. I think that's a good process. And I think the, the key for tonight, I mean, Hal Walker and I were able to hear from Tom at the National League of Cities meeting. He gave us a, just an overview without the PowerPoint in terms of the kinds of, the kinds of questions to ask. Because really, we're at, we're at a critical time. And one of the reasons communities are asking these questions is because they're facing the same pressures we are. It's a top priority and it's very expensive. And so trying to balance those two of, there's no question, public safety is going to remain a top priority for this community. I haven't heard anyone say otherwise. And how do we make sure that we're finding all the efficiencies we can so that we're staffing at the right time of day? I mean, that seems pretty basic if, if for both, for all of ours, police, fire, and sheriff. We might, we, we're going to find out is we're doing some things well. I think that's one thing we're going to find out, is there's some things that our departments are doing that are great. We might also find out some things that we could do that could improve our departments from an efficiency standpoint that don't compromise safety of our employees or of our community. One of the things that I would be interested in, and this, I don't know, this would be a question I'd want to answer in the study. If, if the city put, if we were concerned about fire fatalities, if we were to do a massive outreach and put some dollars behind it to make sure every home had a working smoke detector in it. I mean, a smoke detector goes off a lot faster than you can dial 911 and get a fire truck to your house. You can save more lives with a smoke detector than with a whole legion of people. So is there, and it doesn't make sense that we would look at something preventative like that, particularly in our single-family homes? There are a lot of not-for-profit groups that push the smoke detectors, but is there some kind of comprehensive program that we as a city can get behind that's really going to, that's really going to make it safer for our community, particularly in some of our older homes? Because single-family structure fires probably occur in older homes more frequently. And so if we can look at where are our older homes and do we deploy differently in those areas? I mean, that would be an interesting question for me. Do we deploy differently in the area that have the buildings that are the most likely to burn? I don't know the answer to that. But these are the kinds of questions I think we need to be asking. Because I want to make sure we're deploying people where they're needed and they're there on time. And I think we can go a long way to looking at that. I'm also interested in the data in terms of staffing for EMS versus fire suppression. We know the vast number of our calls are EMS. This is true in most communities. We're fortunate to have it under the same roof. I think that's a big add for our community. I remember when that decision was made, almost ten years ago, a little more than ten years ago. And that's, I don't know anyone in our community who would say that putting EMS and fire together was not a win for our community. I think it was. But just to make sure that we're deploying those accurately. Because data might show there are more ambulance calls at a certain time of day than others. Are we staggering our staffing? I also like the idea of community policing being a part of the culture of the department and not a department in the department, not a silo in the department, but a whole culture of how everybody responds. I think that's very interesting, intriguing and interesting data that I'd like to look at from the police side. So, other questions or thoughts? Are we gathering the data now that we need to be able to do this study? I mean, you say it's on our computers.
You, you, if you have a CAD system and computers, you're getting it, sometimes it takes us longer. We usually spend about three to four months getting the data from a community and cleaning it. That, that is the largest.
Getting versus gathering. Like we have it, we haven't gathered it, right?
Right. We haven't gathered it, but you, you are collecting it, I'm sure.
So we have computer-aided dispatch, right?
Yes.
So we have the, the data's in the system.
Fair, we just have to gather.
This is our life in the unified government right now.
Hunting and gathering.
Hunting and gathering. We're collecting berries to try to feed ourselves. So what's the turnaround when we say, "We're ready to study the, we're ready, we've already teed up the fire. We're ready to go." What's your turnaround time typically with a city of our size, a city of, you know, our county has one hundred and sixty-five thousand, our city one hundred and fifty-five thousand? What's usually your turnaround in terms of...
Usually within a few weeks, we can begin the collection process of the data. We, we actually, our team of PhDs comes out and begins working with your data people to extract the data in a forum. And then it's, depending on the quality, and if we have questions, because the one thing that they're trained to do is look are their problems. Like I explained to the firefighters, one of the challenge that we have in fire is they'll do inspections, they'll do that type of thing, station duties that aren't always tracked on the CAD. So we have to quantify those areas. So there's a lot of stuff that firefighters do that is not captured in CAD. So how do we come up with that, that capability and then begin marrying all of those different things together? We usually plan about ninety to one hundred and twenty days on that. Because if, if we find a problem, we don't charge more, we come back and we ask you to stop, begin working on these issues so that we can quantify them. Because it's only as good as that information that you collect. And then at the same time, we hopefully fix all of that so that going forward, you're able to do that on a continual basis, that you're able to deploy and make smart decisions.
Now, when you look at that data, because some of the information we just started looking at here as well as overtime, can you do predictive analysis on what's causing overtime based on the deployment?
Yes. We can begin drilling down into that, what's causing, what's the root factor. That begins to drive some of those decisions.
And do you also do a geographic analysis of where the calls for service are? And do you also make recommendations in terms of deployment of fire stations, for instance?
Yes. We look at mapping. One of the things that I mentioned to the, I think it was the command team today, you know, how do, how did we used to locate fire stations? Anybody know how? It was how far a horse could run at full gallop before it collapsed pulling a steamer truck. That was how we located fire stations. Goes back to the turn of the century. It happens to work out to about a mile and a half, which also happens to match up with NFPA seventeen-ten and the standards today that show that's the time period we need to get there. Horses apparently were very smart at their running. And back in those days, it actually worked out, but the data backed into it. But with today, with street, with street calming, with traffic calming, with expressways going through town, it's not a grid system anymore. It's not an easy grid system. And so we do the GIS mapping because what we think may be a nice round circle of deployment often isn't. It may have a leg out here or a leg over this way, and you may have an area that's underserved or undercover. So we, we concentrate on GIS, looking at both the time as well as the demand. Where's, where are the calls for service coming in? It happens in this community, they're all down in the right lower area, but their stations were equally deployed, they were equally deployed across the city. Everyone had the exact same equipment in. But the demand was being driven down in the, in the lower right-hand side. Their response times were creeping up because all of their units were being tied up in one part of the community.
Mr. Kane?
Before I get to my last part. Before I get to my last part, I'm going to go to the first part. Because I would like to do the study all at once and not start fire and then police and then the sheriffs. Because whatever changes we make, we need to make them all at one time. Disrupt the apple cart less, if it's going to be disrupted. And my second point is, then you heard about the pole barn at 123rd and Leavenworth Road, where I'm sure there were horses at one time. And that we actually have firemen living there, mice with names, you know, it's a nice little place. So it might be one of those figures that's way up there. And I'd imagine that the horse couldn't get to my house by the time it would burn to the ground. We actually have a facility that's a pole barn. Not that you're the first person, you're the first time that, I'm sure you've heard this, but everybody on, in TV land, how you doing? You know, I'm right. And so there's going to be some questions, not, you know, I guess as you're looking at, equipment and then maybe the feasibility of combining police and fire stations. Do you guys deliver that type of stuff as well?
That's usually, we do the data analysis and then our team of experts that are, you know, include Barney Malekian, who's the cops director, who's on our team. We have a team of fire officials, Joe Pozo from Loudoun County, Dr. Steve Knight from Florida, that look at the operational and they'll look at your stations and what should be staged in your equipment and is it appropriate? Is it need replacing? What cycles are you on?
When they get here, you come see me. The other thing that, and I don't want to be negative, but this pot of gold, because we could be saying, you know, we want these new fire stations, we want these new police substations. The question is, is how do we fund them? So some of this information we get, we may not have the money to fund the changes that we'd like to make.
That's exactly right. I mean, one of the things that we need to, particularly with a lot of our facilities, we have some police station facilities that are deplorable. We have some fire stations, conditions that are deplorable. We have some facilities that are a mess, because I believe, if I remember correctly, the pole barn has buckets on the floor also to collect the rainwater from the roof. Is that right? The aforementioned pole barn. I also remember the study says that that area of the city is the happiest with their fire service of anybody. So I hate to ruin a good thing. If they're, if they love that pole barn, I don't want to make the people unhappy.
They're happy because they have a good commissioner.
That must be it. That must be it. But we also, one of the things we need to look at, and this comes to the sheriff's study, is the sheriff's study may well show that we would do better if we had our juveniles out of our prison. Well, that's going to cost money that we don't have right now. And so when we get these recommendations, the advantage of doing them together is not only that we have a similar rollout in our community, but it's also that we can start prioritizing our CMIP based on what the biggest bang for the buck is. Because if we get the fire report and it says, well, here are where your stations ought to be, so this station you do well to reinvest in. Because I don't want to go fixing a bunch of stations that we don't, that they're going to say, you know, that station's in the wrong place based on how the roads run now. So we might find out that we have some stations we need to spend some money on, we start down that road, then we find out that we have a new jail we need to build or juvenile that we find out, well, maybe we should have prioritized that first because it would have saved us more money. There's also an organizational capacity issue in terms of how we would run these studies concurrently in the administrator's office in terms of making sure none of the studies get short shrift in that process. So Administrator Bach, how would you think about doing all three at the same time?
As he slowly grabs a microphone.
Letting the process think a little bit. You know, I see the combination when you start talking to deployment of the resources, the way we're set up from police and fire perspectives and some of those. And probably it's a way, when you issue out an RFP, you can ask companies what you can do and how you would do that. Offhand, I would probably react that the way we run our detention center is a little bit different animal. And it would be one that, well, you may want to get the information at the same time. It may be a different company or it wouldn't necessarily have to be married up with the others as you, you know, go through and study it. But I see the advantage from the standpoint of saying, boy, if we put all this together at the same time, then you get to see how big, you know, the nugget's going to be that you're going to have to crack, get into it and say how much this is going to cost and how we're going to pay for it over years. So that's kind of my firsthand reaction to how we'd look at it. When it comes to the resources to dig into it, you know, we would be largely going into, you know, utilizing sheriff's department personnel, utilizing police and fire with that. But I only have so many members of my research staff that I could assign to work with them at a given time. So we would probably have to work on that a little bit and see how much assistance a company needs when they come in. Because they are asking us to look at our data and there's, well, they're putting information together, they're coming to us and asking us to go fill things out before it goes out to them. So Tom, I don't know if you'd have different reactions to the way I answered that, but...
The police and the fire marry up pretty good because the data usually is in the same CAD or, and so we can extract it and then we split it into two. We have Dr. Gong Wang, who does the fire, and we have Dr. Dove Chalst, who does the police. But they can extract it all at once and then they are able to share the data. So it actually saves money than doing one, then coming back doing another. And then the operational teams, we can work with you. But you're right, in the, while the data's being looked at and cleaned, we have requests for information that we make for policies and procedures and different things that the operational team is going to look at that will make recommendations off from.
The other hope I would have is that we could find some efficiencies within our departments that would help us fund the investments that we need to make. That there would be, I would anticipate, since we've, does anyone remember the last time we've done a comprehensive study of fire and police service? 10 years? I've only been here seven years and we haven't done it. So it's been a while. My hope is there would be some enough efficiencies that we could find in our operations that would free up resources that we could put towards the kind of investment we need to make to give our departments the kind of facilities they deserve and the kind of equipment they deserve in order to do the best job. The challenge is, with the trajectory we're on, I mean, we're already behind in our equipment purchases for all equipment. We're behind in our update on all of our facilities. And yet, despite that, we're averaging about 44% increase over the last nine years in our three departments combined. We've got to find the efficiencies that we can then drive into our facilities and equipment. And I think that's, there should be a sense of urgency for that, to make sure we do this sooner than later. All right. I think it's fascinating. I think the data, and the decisions ought to be data-driven, not hunch-driven, not emotionally-driven. They ought to be data-driven. I think it's a great opportunity. So, any other questions?
See if we can fund it.
All right. All right. Well, thank you very much for your presentation. Thank you for taking the day. I mean, I thought it was a good idea to present it. It has been presented already to the command staff and it's been presented to the union. I think as we move forward, we could do joint presentations to make sure everybody has an opportunity to ask the questions. Because I guarantee the command staff and the union are going to think of questions that we wouldn't think of.
Correct.
And we might think of questions they wouldn't think of. So I think that's a good opportunity moving forward to make sure we have everybody at the same table. All right. Tom, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Appreciate it.
All right. Yes, we have one other item.
We're thinking along the same lines, Mike. I had just asked him the same question you asked. Can we just do them all together?
That's it. Bishop Ward connected.
That's right. The bell should ring.
That's right. The bell at St. Anthony Toll's, as you're mentioning. Yep. I'm going to ask Administrator Bach to set up this next portion.
All right, we just have a, this is really just a brief review of two application processes that we are working on right now. One is the MARK application for essentially public work projects and the other is the Tiger one. Both of them are fairly time-sensitive as we start digging into the different projects that we can do. In previous years, I think our staff has gone together, they looked at our public works projects and they submit applications. We wanted to make sure these were in front of the commission, so you were aware of what steps we were taking, what projects we had looked at and which ones we felt had the best opportunity to win the grant award. So Phil Heatherman, our city engineer is here, county engineer, and I'll let him step through these.
Thank you, Mr. Bach. So there are two specific grant applications coming up. The MARK grant applications, which we gave a briefing at both the December and January Public Works Committees, as well as the Tiger Grants, which recently announced that what they call Round Tiger Six is coming up. In terms of the MARK applications, we do this every two years, although this is kind of a big year because some of the special pots of money have all been rolled into one big grant application round. And those applications are due actually a week from tomorrow, so we are feverishly putting together all of the information and data that's requested. Most of these on this bullet points are ones that we mentioned previously, but I'll just recap them. The first four bullet points are what we'd call the major road construction projects that we're targeting. Leavenworth Road, 63rd to 38, that would actually be a project where we do the streetscape. We did the mill and overlay, but as you know, sidewalks are very challenging. We have a lot of guard rail. It's a very, it's basically, if you think of a complete streets, it is an incomplete street and we'd like to basically finish out that run. Minnesota Avenue would be finishing up downtown to the same standards that are at 7th and Minnesota. Central Avenue and 18th Street intersection is a congestion mitigation air quality focused intersection project. And then on the basis of the complete streets, the sidewalk and trail master plan and the Healthy Communities Wind dot request, they identified the 10th to 12th Street Bike Way Metropolitan to Quandero as kind of a next big route to get signed for bikeways. A point to note on that bullet, we're not proposing widening the street or doing anything like that. This would be about taking that existing corridor and making it as bike-friendly as can be, given the constraints we have there. One of the reasons these bike projects are important is, as the federal government and as the Mid-America Regional Council is focused on that issue, they have squirreled away more and more of the money for basically bike-only. So if you don't come to the table with a bike project, you're just basically giving up some of the competition that you might have.
How great is that? More bike trails.
Is that rhetorical?
And then Safe Routes to School, which used to be a separate funding program run directly by KDOT, has been moved into the MARK program. We've been very successful in the past. We've done five schools with construction in the past and we've developed a good partnership with USD 500. And we're beginning the partnership growth with Turner and we're open to working with all of our school districts. These six schools up here are the ones that for one reason or another seem to be primed to actually be able to take it to a construction level. We won't get all of these projects. This is well in excess of what, not well, it's targeted approach to making sure that if we can get lucky, we will get lucky, but we will not get all of these projects. I also did not include the transit projects, but transit is going after also some of the same pots of money for transit-oriented work. That's the Mid-America Regional Council. And so this is just a graphic that shows you where these projects fall. Every two years, the round looks a little different and, you know, where the dots fall on the map look a little different, although over time, we've been successful in investing in all parts of the city. This map shows another issue, which is the Tiger Grants. Tiger is basically the real big leagues right now, if you're talking about federal funding. It's what's funding the Streetcar Project in Kansas City, Missouri. It was what funded R. Connect's State Avenue Project, although R. Connect's was just one piece of a very large award that the Kansas City Metro Region got with the first round of Tiger. We've looked at our chances and originally shortlisted down to basically three places that we thought might even be potentials. Village West and State Avenue interchange, the Turner diagonal, Riverview Avenue bridges and the potential redevelopment there, and the future and ongoing need for investment and economic development around KU Med Center and make sure that we can keep up with all of the growth that can happen there. And after giving it a lot of careful consideration, we think that Village West and State Avenue Interchanges is our strongest candidate. And I'll show you here on this slide, the kind of considerations we need to have. These, if they're not completely shovel-ready, they need to be getting awfully close to shovel-ready to be competitive. So Village West and State, we've had over five years of preparing. We know what the recommendation is. We've done the public engagement. They've got to be big projects. There's no point going through the pain of these Tiger Grants if you're not going to bring home tens of millions of dollars. And Village West and State is a place that we need to find tens of millions of dollars to do what it takes out there. These have to pass the benefit-cost analysis and frankly, it's not clear yet whether even Village West and State will, although it's probably the only one that we know enough about to be able to do a credible BCA calculation with. And we are working with Trans Systems, who was the designer of the concept study. And if we find out that there's just no way that we're wasting our time, then we'll make a no-go decision and that'll be the end of Tiger discussion for unified government this round. And we do have to have money to leverage in order to make a competitive case. If you look at the information that's on the federal government website, this is like the nationwide beauty contest. These projects have to have a story to tell. They have to hit the buzzwords that are important to the Washington folks who are going to review these discretionary grants. And one of the things they emphasize is, they want projects that leverage other people's money. Now, we have not necessarily created the funding mechanism, but we've been pretty transparent in our discussions with the business community in the Village West area, that the general fund isn't going to just be walking up with the pot of money. This is going to have to be a partnership. So of all the portions of the community where we've begun that discussion, this seems to us to be the one. So with that, I would ask, I would stand for any questions that you all may have.
Yes. Can you speak directly into the microphone, please, Mr. Walker?
Certainly Village West and State Avenue is important. And, you know, but I think you're understating the importance of the KU Medical Center area transportation. First of all, because one thing that seems to be guaranteed is the continued dynamic growth of the KU Medical Center. Story to tell is, is that we do not have enough transportation to get those otherwise unable to get to the KU Med Center the opportunity to do so. And it's a national cancer institute, it's the leading cardiology center. I mean, KU has gone from, as we heard at the chamber luncheon last week, from, well, they said it, the dregs to being one of the top 10 academic hospitals, surrounded by continued expansion into the biosciences and technologies. People are going to need a way to get to work. There's no place to park there. They got a parking garage that is constantly full. You either go there at 6 o'clock in the morning or late at night and you'll find a parking spot. Otherwise, it's full. So I think you're understating which grant might have the violin to play with the national recognition of the medical center and the projected growth. I mean...
Just my opinion. I'll start with that and let Bill maybe respond as did, because it was an area that we pushed pretty hard on. There's a planning aspect, actually, Commissioner, and that would be the area we would go for here. Because I feel like there's a great opportunity and I think everything you said, we agree with. Look at that campus, the site, the opportunity there seems immense. It's the state of where we are in preparedness to put our application together and what we could do with that project area, which is where staff looked at it and Bill and Bob went through it and determined that it's very difficult for us to put an application that would get a second, even a first look, really, as it went through the process. So it's not that we don't think it hits as high a need. And in fact, probably as we went through this, our discussion was, what we need to do is build in our own money for planning around that site to do similar to what we did. planning around that site, to do similar to what we did out at State Avenue and Village West, so we can get ourselves ready to go after money like this. Because the story you tell around KU is a very strong story, and I think we could really make a good case for it. But right now, we're just not in a position that, if we put together an application, they'd look at it and say, so what are you gonna do? What's your solution? And we don't have the answer. And Bill, I don't know if you want to, you want to clarify that?
I agree. If you just looked at areas that might actually sell that national story, you can tell a very rich national story around the KU Med Center, you can bring in transit, you can bring in the mixed use. But the application then says, okay, so what do you want to build, and are you gonna be done building it quickly? And that's the part that we just don't have the planning done to answer that question.
So Commissioner Walker, to your point exactly, one of the things that, as we've cut our CMIP projects, that's our capital maintenance improvement projects, that's money in the ground, in terms of streets, sewers, et cetera. One of the things we've cut out in the last several years, particularly through the recession, was that planning money. And identifying the planning money that is the first step to even going after the right grants. But we've got to do some of that funding, and some of those plans can be $50,000, $100,000, $250,000. But we've got to put that money in the hopper, and this is one of the things that, I chaired the Public Safety Standing Committee, and Public Safety and Public Work Standing Committee that Commissioner Kane chairs now. I chaired that for four years, and we would get this presentation on, we're going after this Tiger grant. And I always ask the question, why are you going after this Tiger grant? Why aren't you going after this other area? And it was always this issue, I guess the term federally is shovel-ready. And so my question has been, how do you get a project shovel-ready? What does that take? And so some of these MARK grants that we're looking at, for instance, looking at the, Commissioner Walters has talked about a planning grant for K-32 corridor. So if we can go after a MARK grant to do some planning, then we have a proposal when these big, the Tiger grants are the big dog grants. Then you have something to go after. But I asked Mr. Roddy to bring this conversation to us, and even the conversation for the MARK grants, I wanted that at Standing Committee. I wanted the Commissioner input on what grants and planning grants should we be going after for MARK? Because the staff does a great job coming up with those, with the different ideas in terms of what's broken. We need to make sure that our voice is at the table in terms of what priorities do we have as a commission. And so I think this conversation is, what kind of money, and I would take, as we move into our CMIP for this budget, what areas do we want to see planning? Leavenworth Road, I've heard, I've heard K-32, KU Med is critical. We need to identify the areas, and all of the commissioners know what parts of your district are ripe for fixing, and where should we focus those dollars? So that's why I wanted this in front of the group, because I don't want us to go after a Tiger grant, because it will cost us some money to apply. What does it cost to apply for a Tiger grant?
I believe Trans Systems estimated $25,000 is how much some agencies actually spend just to put in a competitive application. We haven't decided whether we're even to a point of taking that on, but...
But if we take it on, we should win, and/or at least have a very good chance of winning. So Commissioner Walters?
I have a question or a comment. The Village West and State Avenue interchange is of interest to me, and I see one of the challenges we have in Village West, and as that area grows, is that it's not really a pedestrian-friendly environment, and it's certainly not a bicycle-friendly environment. And as more people get out there, and especially living out there, I think we should do more to encourage that kind of thing. So the initial plans I've seen for that intersection improvement is all about cars. And I think it creates a real roadblock from the Cerner Office Building to the rest of the Village West development, and whatever potential development is south of State Avenue along, in that general Speedway area. So I guess if we're going to convince ourselves that we need that, you know, that development of that intersection, as I've seen it depicted, I really think we should encourage some thought about pedestrian access, and perhaps even bicycle access, but mostly pedestrian. I was out last night watching at the soccer game, and as I drove down State before the game, there were hundreds and hundreds of people walking along State Avenue in the dirt, because there are no sidewalks. And I really do think pedestrian circulation, I know the soccer stadium came late in the overall planning, but I think pedestrian circulation's been an afterthought, and the more we could do to encourage that kind of thing, I think would be best. Thank you.
Thank you. And in fact, I'd say we agree. On Saturday, you know, the slide said one of the strategic challenges for the city, one of them is to tell our story better. And what I'm hearing is, we didn't tell a very good story about how much bike and pedestrian had been thought about in that study. So it is there, and we have given a lot of consideration to it. So part of what I need to do is come back here and share the rest of the story about that project. The traffic stuff is probably the stuff that's been most visual, but we do have plans to make that as pedestrian-friendly. In fact, I believe when we had a chance to explain the project more fully, I could show how to be better than it, you know, this design we have. But certainly, if that's the impression that's been left, we haven't told our story very well.
Commissioner, just a comment. We also believe that bike trails along State Avenue is a great idea, going all the way out to the apartments. In fact, I believe we put in an application for that trail about a year ago, so it's on our radar.
Thank you.
And do I understand, too, this Tiger grant would not only be Village West and State Avenue, would it also tie into the 435 State Avenue interchange as well?
We would need to talk to KDOT, and part of this benefit-cost analysis would be to also decide, do we want to put both of those together, or just do the one? We haven't decided yet.
Okay. All right. As you're thinking about CMIP, thinking about planning dollars, thinking about long-range planning in our planning department, we don't have anyone dedicated to long-range planning in our planning department. Thinking about projects in your district that need planning dollars. Those are the kinds of things that, putting in year one, years two, three, four, five, are when we can start applying for the big grants to help get some of them done. There may be times when we spend money on it, on studies that we're not able to implement, but if we don't study them, we won't even be able to apply. And so I think that's the component that's important. All right? Any other questions on the Tiger grant application? This is for information, but I wanted to make sure, and they said, hey, we think we're gonna apply for a Tiger grant. I said, let's come tell the story first, and make sure we understand how this works. So I'm glad you did.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, that is our final item tonight, and we are adjourned. Commissioner Kane? Nope? Okay, we are adjourned.